But I didn't want to show what it was. Oh, okay. Does he realize that the doll could, I wonder?
I don't know.
Okay, yeah, doll like younger.
She looked at the hospital. She wore glasses, I wanted the nurse to say, well, she took him home to take care of the dead, and he died early.
Hmm.
So we know when he died.
They might not let him go in nineteen ninety-four. You know how like some places you have to do it today.
You said Laurie?
Ah, okay, okay.
Did Henry, Henry, right? Was it there? I wasn't sure, because.
Not a little something at mommy's house. Definitely, because he was good with them numbers. Probably say he can't play now. Look, I'm gonna play. I never, I mean, not never, but I really felt it. Like, see?
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our council meeting. And I'll call this meeting to order. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, P dot L nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was posted on the Borough of Pennsboro Municipal Hall of Fame Board designed for that purpose. Notice was also posted on the Borough of Pennsboro website at www dot pennsboro dash NJ dot org and was emailed to the official newspaper as provided by resolution. Additionally, in response to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen, this October fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting is held via Zoom online platform. Can everyone stand, please, to do the pledge of allegiance? Put your right hand over your heart and say the pledge, if you please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I, I can't hear. I can't hear anything. I can't hear anything.
There's no volume.
I hear you now. We can't hear. I'm sorry, we can't hear anything.
Yeah, I agree. We only see lips moving. There's no volume.
Yeah, like the mask is moving, but that's it.
I can just go on.
We do have a clock.
Can you just test out again?
Testing. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Debbie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Charlotte and Martin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So we're into.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for your patience. Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. From June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, regular session, may I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin. May I have a second? Thank you, Council President. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes. Thank you. On the agenda is payment of the bills and approval of the bill list. Maybe I have a motion to adopt. Councilwoman Scarpese, may we have a second, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes. Thank you all. Moving to the next item on the agenda, introduction of resolutions for consideration by consent. First, may I make a motion to withdraw one fifteen? There's a dispute as to the amount on that resolution. Our board's not able to provide. Next resolution is, we have a bill for fifteen thousand. Have a bill for fifteen thousand. But we believe that the three, three thousand of that was substituted for a bill for twenty-six thousand. So it may be a lot. But we weren't able to confirm it since all the cases.
So she's asking to table that.
Table that. Okay, so motion to table by Councilwoman Scarpese, may I have a second? Thank you, Council President. Mincy, Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes. Yes.
For affirm mission passes. Okay. Um, the resolutions for consideration by consent are as follows. Two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one fourteen. This is an approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Penn Street Service. The next resolution is two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one sixteen, and that is a resolution authorizing salary and wage increases in the Borough of Pennsboro. And resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one seventeen, which is a resolution establishing a procedure for council for the payment of bills. May I have a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one fourteen, two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one sixteen, and two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one seventeen? May I have a motion to adopt? Thank you, Council President Mincy, may I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy? Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes. Yes, for affirm. Thank you. Okay, um. I want to read, uh, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash ten dash one eighteen. This is a resolution of condolence for the family of Sean Kidd. Um, as many of you may know, Sean Kidd, uh, passed away this past Saturday. Whereas Sean Kidd was a lifelong resident of Pennsboro, New Jersey, and a graduate of Pennsboro High School. And whereas he was the son of former Pennsboro Police Chief Gary Double D. And whereas Sean was very active in the Pennsboro community. He served on the Pennsboro Recreation Committee for ten years and assisted his father with the summer youth recreation basketball league for over fifteen years. And whereas Sean also was an integral part of the effort to bring back the annual Pennsboro Day parade and festivities. And whereas Sean was both a family and community oriented person who cared about all aspects of the community. He assisted with the monthly food bank and was known to provide assistance to Pennsboro senior citizens. And whereas he was the assistant program director of Pennsboro Summer Basketball League, as well as the co-owner and partner of Casey Entertainment and Big Boy Promotions. His company, Casey Entertainment, worked with Autism Speaks, a national organization, as well as the Stop the Violence Coalition of Wilmington, Delaware, to raise funds in order to allow members of the Pennsboro Summer Recreation League to play at the Wells Fargo Center in Philadelphia. Whereas Sean's passion was music, and he believed that music would lift the soul, no matter if a person was happy or sad. And whereas Sean Kidd acquired this bike on Saturday, October second, two thousand twenty-one, and leads a host of loving family, friends, and community members. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Borough of Pennsboro hereby celebrates the life achievements of Sean Kidd and offers condolences to his family for their loss. May I have a motion? May I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Sorry, motion to adopt the resolution?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes. Thank you all. Okay, moving on to the next item. First reading and introduction of ordinances. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-four, which is an ordinance creating an anti-nepotism policy for the Borough of Pennsboro. May I have a motion to adopt by title only?
Motion to adopt by title only?
Thank you, Council President, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scarpese.
Before we do, before we do vote on what, what exactly is that?
Anti-nepotism policy, which is what this is, is a policy which, uh, sets forth the parameters under which individuals may or may not have family members, uh, working in positions which they have control over, or whether or not elected officials can actually hire family members. In, in this case, the anti-nepotism policy prevents elected officials from having their family members hired. Uh, this was not just something that's prudent for us to do as a municipality, but it's something that's required under the recovery plan from the state legislature. So we're, we're, we're now going to be in compliance by doing this.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes. All. The next ordinance is an ordinance, we, is, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-five, and that's an ordinance revising the table of use regulations in section four fifty dash fourteen of the Code of the Borough of Pennsboro. May I have a motion to adopt by title only? Anyone, motion to adopt by title?
Can we try to see what that exactly refers to also? So. What does that actually pertain to as well?
One second. Behind the.
Okay, I opened up the one, I was, I got you, let me go to my.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I opened up the one, I mean, that's what I was looking at.
This is. Okay. This is an ordinance that revises the table of use of resi- regulations for the borough regarding, um, cannabis licensing. And what this actually does is, this is a ordinance which sets forth the parameters and various areas under which cannabis use would be allowed in the borough. There are several classes of cannabis use, and of course, as we're talking about cannabis, many people refer to it as marijuana. Um, there are cultivators licensed, manufacturers licensed, wholesalers licensed, distributors licensed, retailers licensed, and delivery licensed. And each of those particular licenses, if you have it in a borough, would have to be assigned use in a particular zone. What this ordinance does is it says that if you're going to have cannabis, we would limit the use of camp or the existence and use of cannabis for manufacturing, cultivating, and the other areas to the zones which are set forth in the, uh, second page of the ordinance.
I wanna, uh, I'll table this till the next meeting.
You wanna make a motion to table?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to table this, yes.
Is there a second?
Second, awesome.
Okay. Okay, so motion to table by Councilman Carter, um, and that's a second by Council President Mincy. Madam Clerk, can you do roll call vote, please? Councilman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Mincy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpese?
Yes.
For affirm mission passes.
And then stay with you till the next meeting?
Yes, stay with you till the next meeting. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, we move to appointments. We have the appointment of James M. Shields to Liberty Number One of Pennsboro, and we have James M. Shield, um, appointed to Pennsboro Ambulance. We have a motion to appoint, please. So we don't have to vote that. So these, so we don't need motions to appoint? Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Shields. All right, moving on to committee reports. Um, buildings and grounds. Sean, do you, do you have anything for buildings and grounds for, um, Councilwoman Martin?
Oh, Ms. Martin is old.
Yeah, she's, she's not.
Oh, sure. Turn this one down.
No, the PA is.
Oh. I'll just talk loud, I'm loud, I can talk loud. Um, buildings and grounds, yes, we got three quotes for the roof. We have three quotes for the roof, uh, which means by the next council meeting, you should, because even now, um, council should have, it's likely to have a vendor in front of you to approve, uh, from the quotes that we got for the roof, uh, we know how we're gonna pay for it. And the park up, the park upgrades are underway, and that's pretty much an update from the last things that we talked about.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to general government, clean communities, Councilwoman Scarpese.
I attended a GIP meeting this month, and we have received safety budget money from them of thirty-five hundred, which is to improve safety within the borough. It can be spent on fire ambulance, police type things. We've also received from them thirty-four fifty for a safety incentive program. That's money that can be spent for the employees to, for their health, wellness, and safety. We received twelve hundred and fifty dollars for just wellness incentive. And, um, Tracy from the Police Department has bought a few of the, uh, desks that you could stand up with out of that money, and there's still about half of that money left. Um, we've received a reimbursement on our bill of fifteen hundred dollars because we all attended their class on safety. And we have twenty-five hundred dollars that they were giving us for cyber risk management. We've had zero lost time accidents. Our premium assessment this year is gonna be three hundred and ninety-six thousand eight ninety-six. And of that, we got a surplus returned to us from last year of sixty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars. So we have some money that we can spend, and I think you're the safety coordinator, so you can come and look at the things that you can spend that, spend that on the other side. Awesome. Um, I also attended a clean community meeting. Um, I have some flyers, get some, some these out in the audience about A D R. Thanks. It's about the banning of single-use bags and Starpim for next year. Um, I want to acknowledge the Pennsboro Exchange Club, they cleaned up the riverfront before the slalom festival. Nice job of that. Um, and I've also been in touch with Dr. Kevion from the school district about using some of this money to maybe do some neuro. about using some of this money to maybe do some murals, which we can use the clean community money on to prevent graffiti. Also talked to Rich about buying some paint, because I know that and a couple others that are going out there and making the town look a little bit better. Worked with Mr. Tarver and did inquiries for the payment of bills this month. We're also working on an agenda ordinance and an emergency payment, a payment of, say how we said it, what's the emergency moment? How we declare an emergency and we can spend money without going through the full process. That's what we're gonna be working on for the next meeting. And also been working with Erica when cleaning up some of the files in here shredding a lot of things that are past the retention schedule. I also wanted to wish Mr. Caesar good health, since he hasn't been, you know, careful he recovers quickly. That's all I have for this meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to housing zoning, Councilwoman Giorgano is not able to be here today. You have a report? Okay.
September. Ten-day notices in September. Forty-two was taken care of. Forty-three ten-day notices were sent out. Twenty-nine for grass weeds, three storage of tires, four for dumping furniture, two for vehicles not covered, two for vehicles on lawns. Any were summoned soon.
Yes, okay. All right, moving on to recreation. Councilman Carter?
I don't have the official report, uh I just haven't seen anything as far as register. Uh any depth that I personally know about is Sean King. Outside of that, I haven't seen anything for the type of materials or anything. Speaking of recreation area, I just wanted to announce that the final car cruise of the year is tomorrow at Riverfront. If you have a vehicle, motorcycle, type of vehicle, period, which you like to bring out, you are free to do so tomorrow will be the final one of the year. They have our basketball event last week, but I'll allow the mayor or somebody else to speak on that, as I wasn't able to attend that event. Also, they had the Spanish heritage event this past weekend. I'll allow somebody to speak on that also, who's present. But outside of that, top of my head, that's the only thing I could think of to report is the final car cruise tomorrow. Or you can bring any type of vehicle that you might want to show out there, motorcycle trucks, cars, drag racing cars, anything you want to show or want to bring out. That's all I can think of.
Thank you. Public works, streets, and roads. Council President, you have a quick. And then moving on to public safety. It's for you. Moving on to departmental reports, business administrator, Mr. Brown.
Um, yes. The biggest thing that, the biggest task for this month is we're gonna be purchasing, there's quite a few things to purchase. We don't understand where our budget is, we have some grant money for a few things, so we need some purchases also for things. I'm gonna ask that in your respective, to the council members and your respective committees, to be prepared to hear maybe some potential vendors. Also, there's detailed plans for what's happening in your respective department in terms of institutional reforms that are, that are occurring. And a few weeks ago, I sent, I sent an email with some suggested discussion points for committee meetings, and I always like to, Madam Mayor, encourage council members again to have committee meetings so we can further discuss it, some of those items that would give census for certain things to be forward.
Um I'm just gonna say, it is October. We do normally try to do a truck retreat towards the end of the month for Halloween. If there's anybody in the community that would like to help volunteer in the truck retreat, you're welcome to come and help us out with that. Like decorate your car, whatever the case may be. Everybody to participate in that, so if anybody, anybody else in general would like to help with that, you're welcome. So, you can reach out to me personally, or you can contact their business administrator, Sean, and he'll get you in touch with me as well. But I did just wanna make that announcement also.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the finance officer report. Ms. Walker? Mrs. Walker? Moving on to police director, Ms. Vera.
The tax rate's been set?
It's been set.
Yes. Yeah, the tax rate, the tax rate was set two weeks ago, and it, yeah, again, this would be, uh, the, I'm saying this to you for memory. The borough's pretty much stayed the same, the districts, the districts went down, two cents.
And then he was waiting for the counter the last time I spoke.
Sure, sure, so the next council meeting, you'll have the treasures report, which will sell some.
Director Rivera?
We, Madam Council. We've been okay on what's transpired over the last several weeks, some of that activity that we've participated in here. But foremost, I wanted to report to council and the community that the Salem County Prosecutor's Office made an arrest of a suspect that was wanted in a homicide that occurred in Pennsboro. Last several weeks, I conducted personally thirty structural assessments of homes that are on, or on properties. That's a top-to-bottom assessment, basements, attic space, et cetera. See what conditions are, where are those homes, as well as determine whether or not people are living in them. None of them were occupied, unthankfully, with van disruptions. On September twenty-first, Mayor, the business administrator, myself, and the officer in charge, Robert Fred, attended a walk-through Salem City with the acting attorney general, one of the time prosecutor, was a great event that was co-written by Coalition of the Safe Community. At that event, they had an announcement that they wanted to partner with Pearl Pennsboro as well as our police department. So we're currently in discussions and ultimately, I assume, it's a very proactive, very engaged coalition, done great things in Atlantic City. This is like K D Bay as well, so we're looking forward to them bringing their programs here. On the, on the eighteenth Holy Temple, had a event outside. They held all day, and we, the department assisted them with that. They were, they were elated that we were there. It was great, um officers stationed there periodically. Had bouncy house, program was very successful. And then on twenty-sixth, when we shoot the change, opposite kids' basketball, some of the parishioners from Holy Temple came over. So that was nice, and the first thing that they said to us was, you have all helped us with our event, and we wanted to come support you as positive feedback. On twenty-fifth, we participated in Craft Festival fundraiser by Exchange Club that took place over in Carney's Point. October first, we were at the flag raising ceremony for Pratt at their Hispanic Heritage Celebration. And then this past weekend, we participated in the Latino Festival and the Riverwalk. And so council members, are you able to hold that? So, so the council members know, this was something that had been requested prior to you adopting a special events ordinance. And I'm kind of glad that it took place, it was flawless. Um there were no reported incidents. EMS was on call, as well as the fire department, and I had reached out to them during the week prior to this. And it was a good dry run for a large-scale event, because there were more than two hundred people there. And the business administrator and I walked through the event, uh which was attended by the mayor, Councilwoman Scarpese, Council President Mincy. So we all got to make our own observations and take mental notes so that we can come back and amend the ordinance if we had to. So there were a couple of things that we'll provide feedback on, so that we can report back to council later that should be part of the process when you're contemplating special events. But overall, it was a successful event. The volunteers that helped clean up afterwards were fantastic, the folks that helped smoothed out the surface was great, so there wasn't any tripping hazards and things like that. Uh so, so it was, it was a good event, and it was, a lot of people attended from South Jersey, which is really cool. Few other notes, we still have two officers that are on extended leave. Luckily, we have all our new hires in place. Uh the latest hire, the fifth hire, Officer Fran Ferillo, is up to speed. He's been going through department training, as well as outside training to get him updated on the attorney general requirements. So we're, we're using personnel we have to cover for some of these missing shifts. Another filling that we're doing is the crossing guard post on Virginia Ave. And I was out there this afternoon, and I'm offed out there in the morning, seven thirty with the officers, just to greet the kids that have a bit of time with the cops to go in high class, as the officer standing there blocking traffic. Some of our guys are really tall, so the kids are jumping up and saying hello to the officers. But more importantly, we're making, again, observations when we're, when we're close to our places or we're, or we go to events, we wanna see what's going on. And, and it, it's mind-boggling how the DOT has let this one just go by the wayside, because they did all these improvements to the roadway, they repaved it, they lined it, they've got reflectors up, but they did nothing to enhance the cross, the crosswalks over there. So that's something that we, we made a note of, and we're gonna be following up to the Department Transportation for both the middle school, as well as Lafayette, a little bit down the way. Because you're talking about a forty mile an hour zone, and the only sign is there is twenty-five mile an hours in the school zone when kids are present. People are flying through there like it's a highway, and we really need to improve our safety over there. Regarding the crime stats, well, for the month of September, we only had one burger a week. And overall, we had nine hundred and thirty-eight calls for services. Juvenile, now that the kids are back. Nine hundred and thirty-eight.
In, in a month?
In one month. They're working. Our traffic enforcement is up, it's more than doubled over the past months. Uh the juvenile complaints have dropped significantly now that the kids are back in school. And then overall, for the whole year, our officers have responded to seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven calls for services. And that's my report, you guys have any questions?
Yeah, structural assessments, did you produce any, anything that we could look at?
I put together a spreadsheet, so yeah, be glad to share. Sure, without a doubt.
Thank you, Director Rivera. Moving on to the fire chief report.
Uh Chief Adams here, last two weeks ago, he won't be here.
Okay.
He wanted me to, sorry, he just wanted me to share that he's let the department rise.
And then the same for Debbie Ashcrack as well, right? Okay. Mr. Tarver, do you have an attorney report?
I, I do have a report, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I have a report, but all of my items will be dealt with in executive session because of the nature of the items I have to discuss. So I'll, I'll reserve until then, please.
Okay. All right, moving on to my mayoral comments. As Mr. Rivera, Director Rivera mentioned, this past Saturday, we had a Latin music festival, which was a lot of fun, so thank you to Courtney Restrepo and the Society Pages in Espanol for putting that together for us. It absolutely cost the taxpayers nothing. We did not have to pay for anything, so that's much appreciated. Thank you to all the sponsors and vendors that came out for the event. Um thank you to all the volunteers. Um I want to give a special thank you to Brandon Pritchett, Cory Johnson, Lyndale Hill, John Gilliam, Sean Givens, Elwood, what is Elwood's last name?
Garrett.
Garrett? Elwood Garrett, some of you may know him as Zaddy. Martin and Martin Mincy, and there were some other volunteers out there Saturday morning. They came out at eight o'clock in the morning, and they helped put the stage together. They helped Mr. Restrepo get, get the festival, set the tents up and everything, so thank you to them for doing that. Um thank you again, as Councilwoman Scarpese mentioned, the Exchange Club cleaning up the riverfront, getting the riverfront together. Thank you to Councilman Rambo, Councilwoman Giorgano, Director Rivera. You guys, you guys always clean up the riverfront, but thank you for getting it together for, for that event as well. Um and also, thank you, we had some volunteers, Jared Lane, Corey Ransum. Um they made sure that the millions were put down and everything was smooth for the event. So thank you, there's a lot of people that I need to thank, but thank you to everybody that made this event. Also, uh thank you, let's see, we received an invitation, myself and council, from House of Right. They're having their open house dedication, and they've invited us to attend it on, let's see. October seventeen, I'm sorry, my eyes are a bit, October seventeenth at three P M. in House of Right. So thank you for that invitation. And we'll be there. And also, as Director Rivera mentioned, we did a walk with, in Salem with the Attorney General. I'm thanking for, I think it's called Coalition, make sure I can say it, Coalition for a Safe Community. Um they invited us, it was really nice. Uh we walked through some of the streets in Salem together. And they sent us a nice card, and I'll read it really quick. Um it says, Dear Mayor Thomas, thank you for joining us in the meet and greet with Acting, sorry, Acting Attorney General Andrew Ruck. And, uh, and the community walking Salem. You and your staff are doing great things for Pennsboro, and we look forward to exploring and expanding the Coalition to your city, blessings. And that's from Heather Ashfield, who's the Secretary of Coalition for a Safe Community. They also sent the dainty card to our police department as well. They said, may you and your officers be blessed and safe as you carry out your duties to protect and serve Pennsboro. So that was also from, from them. So that was also from, um, from them. So that's much appreciated. Um, as it was just mentioned, the parking lot at the, the firehouse is getting done. Thank you. Um, we've been waiting for that for a long time. And, um, congratulations to Pratt. Um, they had their flag raising ceremony on the first, as Director Rivera mentioned. Congratulations to Holy Temple for their successful event on the eighteenth. And then, uh, also congratulations, um, for the Youth Empowerment Network, uh, for their shoot for change basketball game between the, the kids and our officers. That was a lot of fun. Um, and I feel like I'm forgetting a lot of things, but I just wanted to, to give you guys an update. We've had a lot of events during the summertime, um, which has restored a lot of positive um, feelings about our town. I've had some people say, you know, you don't focus on, you guys do a lot of partying, focus on cleanup. But I want to explain to the residents my thinking. When you feel good about where you live, you do better. So you have to do things to increase, you know, to uplift the morale of the, of the, the residents in our town. When people feel good about where they live, they'll stop throwing trash out the window. They'll start picking up trash. They'll stop throwing it in the gutters. So I've got a lot of positive feedback and people really appreciate the events that we have had, um, this past summer and the things that we're continuing to do. Right now, I'm working with, uh, Bishop Freddie Washington to do a gospel music festival. So hopefully we can get that done before the weather changes. So, um, more, more about that, um, in the near future. We are, uh, going to be riding on a float for homecoming, October, I think it's October sixteenth, right? Yeah, October sixteen. So we're looking forward to that because we get to decorate the boat. Right, Council President? So that ought to be interesting. The float is for homecoming. So that we don't have to walk. Oh, yes, 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 yes. So yesterday, um, during our F O P meeting, uh, I had the pleasure of meeting the class of nineteen sixty. And these ladies were just so giddy. And so, um, they were planning their high school reunion from nineteen sixty. So I told them when they get their date to let us know and I'll be there. So, so maybe some of the councilmen would want to go there. So that was a pleasure. Um, and that's all I have. Um, let's see, moving into public portion. Um, if anyone from the public has any questions or comments, um, I'd like you to stand up. State your name and your address and you have three minutes to ask, to ask, ask your question. Anyone from the public have any questions?
Oh, I just have to talk loud everybody. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Price. I'm from twenty-five Penn Street. My concern, maybe I don't know if it should be on public, but there's a property at eleven Penn Street that I put in the basement. And I'm trying to find some closure for it. I'd like to purchase it. I think we've spoken, Mr. Tarver, a couple of times. But I haven't really gotten any closure or direction. I'd like to know if I could, I should obtain some assistance from the.
It is a legal matter, so I'm not able to speak to you. You can be over there. I, I will certainly speak to you as soon as.
I'm standing. I am able to do that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Anyone else from the public? Well, that was.
Yeah. I hear better. I'm sorry. Um, Angelis Scott, twenty Mary Street. Um, I did hear, uh,
Yes, so. So a few things are going on. First, um, the park was closed when I, back when I started, the neighborhood park was closed because COVID. And then we discovered that all the way back in twenty seventeen, uh, we had guidance from our insurance company that both, both playgrounds for zero to four and five to ten, both playgrounds had broken equipment that made it unsafe and therefore had to be unused and shut down. It was both of the equipment and a lack of mulch because whenever the park was done, the, the previous type of mulch at this point has corroded and washed away. We were concerned about this because the upgrades are pretty expensive. But, um, because of a dedication to the recovery plan, uh, the borough was awarded a pot of money for both housing demolition and for upgrades to borrow at the park. So what we've done is taken a look at the expense of fixing the playground equipment and mulch. And then looked at the, the park overall to see what other types of upgrades and changes to be made to it. Um, the money is sitting in a pot. Uh, there has, there, there was, in the last few weeks, there was some confusion over, responsibilities, but that's being worked out. And of, because we're in October, certain things can't get done this time of the year. So unfortunately, s- some of those things are going to have to wait until March or April when the weather is better. Um, just today, I got a update from our municipal engineer that gives cost estimates. And I'm going to share those cost estimates with Councilwoman Charlotte Martin, the chair of the grounds committee and the rest of the community members. And, um, with the mayor and team so that we can, uh, continue to make sure that those upgrades are made expeditiously.
I can spread that mold. The park is open.
The park is open and the playground areas are closed. We take those off several times, but part is point where they mow the grass, they remove the caution statements that put around the playground area. I'll tell you because of, we're short, we're short staffed here, as everyone knows, I kind of got tired of going to the park and taking it off. Um, but, but, but thankfully, like the swing is broken. There is no swing, so you can't get on a broken swing. It doesn't exist. Uh, but, but the playground area is still shut. This is, this is, this is the priority. Like, like those, those things need to get fixed quickly so that the danger is eliminated. Um, because we have the money, because we have the strategy, because we have our, our support.
And with twenty point rolling, they, uh, going underneath us for years, twenty point that's always bow down there. They never bow underneath any of the activity.
They, they, I actually.
Are they doing it now?
Yes. They know, but they don't do, they don't get up. They don't clean up the, the clippings. Is that what you call it? Like the leftover grass when you go? Clippings, right? That's what it's called. They don't clean up the clippings.
Okay, well, they wasn't, they weren't cutting underneath either.
And then I cleaned up the clippings. It always leaves a line of dead grass along, like multiple lines of dead grass along the park. Which we get, we get, we could probably, we could probably fix that with them.
And, and one thing that I wanted to add as far as, um, reference to the park, that one of my biggest things that I wanted is to improve our park and, um, expand the basketball court and turn it into a multi-sport, uh, court.
Right.
Which encompasses tennis.
Right.
So, um, I will, because I know there was a lot of questions on things about the park. So I, I will share those with the public, you know, what, what the idea, what plan is for that.
So it also with us, uh, I know Don, Don, we, we, you know, get with each other, references to chocolate tree. So I see that you're doing a lot of activities now at the, um, riverfront down here. So is that what the plan would be for chocolate tree as well again this year?
Thank you, Miss Scott. Anyone else from the public? One of the questions?
Uh, I have two issues. One, uh, I see that money's been approved for. Also, additional money that's supposed to be available for landing avenue. Does anyone know about that issue? It was supposed to, uh, it was supposed to be extra money like a year and a half ago. Change of situation, uh, I don't know if anything's happening with it, but that might be looked into. Because landing avenue, it's almost taken up. Dark route because it has so many tunnels. Uh, and second issue is, uh, issues for river road about a Route one thirty. We have a temple, that's, or even all of them. They have signs that, that are solar that register to speed. I would suggest that this sign can be put up along one thirty in Pennsboro. That also in Pennsboro, they have a couple of crossing areas. And they, they have the lines on them that show where you should walk across the street. And I know that the state didn't put those down. And, um, and all, and besides that, they had poles that when kids were there, there were blinking blue lights. It sort of get the attention of the drivers and all, and with the blue lights that have the, uh, speed limit signs on too. And I think they would be very beneficial. I know I saw a memo like a couple of years ago that the state would actually provide overpasses for the kids. And I don't, I don't know if I can find that, uh, document, but I still have it, but they were offering money for overpasses. That would be like ideal and a couple of spots on. And, and in Pennsboro back on this point, to cross kids over the highway and that they would completely avoid any traffic problems. But I'm, I'm not sure if that money is still available or if there's a possibility that can be addressed. But I know, uh, crossing guards is, you know, it's kind of basic, but those other issues would really help our, our students. And there's a lot of kids that cross that highway to go over to the high school. We're back over to go to Carlton or the, the middle school. They're crossing both ways. That, that's all I was going to say about. Thank you.
Thank you. All, all of your point, your points have been noted and we'll look into those things for you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well.
All right, we have a resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten dash one nineteen, and this is a resolution authorizing, um, executive session. May I have a motion to adopt that resident, resolution? Thank you, Council President. May I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Councilwoman Scarcazy. Madam Speaker, can you do both, please?
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President? Councilwoman Scarpese? Yes, for, for our mission targets.
Madam Court, can you read the matters that will be going to the executive session?
Matters involving individual privacy and attorney client privilege pursuant to N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B. Three and seven, discussion involving Keela Duck. Matters pertaining to a collective bargaining agreement and negotiations pursuant to N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B four seven, discussion regarding fraternal order of police. Number three, matters relating to litigation pursuant to N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B seven, Pierce versus Borough of Pennsboro. Number four, matters relating to litigation pursuant to N J S A ten colon four dash twelve B seven, Hudson versus Borough of Pennsboro. Number five, matters involving individual privacy and attorney client privilege pursuant to N J S A ten colon four twelve B three and seven, discussion regarding attorney general matters. That's all we have for this session.
Um, everyone, the executive session, we would ask that everyone, um, step outside.
Okay.
I was about to say it should be your option to put them in a waste. Your dinner's in the. No.
So we can get everybody out of here. And get everybody out of here quickly. Uh, Mr. Rivera, do you want to say for the?
Sure, you want to do that one first?
Yes, that's what, we'll do that first. Yes, yeah, I, I, um, Sean was going to tell them, I'll be quick.
I told him.